Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome to the Monday, January 4th, 2021 City Council Meeting of the City of Belle-Air Beach. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Councilmember Robyn Aki.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Beam.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swope.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
And City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
Let the record just note that Jody Shirley is appearing on the court. Patty, if Jody needs to speak, she'll just indicate to you, because obviously I can't see her, so she just let you know, or just raise a hand or something, and I'll get over there.
Okay.
Okay, first item of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? So I move motion by Mark Beam, second.
Second.
Second by Dave Gaddis. Any discussion? Citizens, any questions here on the agenda? Rick Shaw?
Good evening, Rick Shaw, 115 13th Street, Belle-Air Beach, Florida. I just want to comment that I received an email not long ago about a gathering sponsored by the City Council to honor our police department.
Rick, can I interrupt you for one second?
Yes.
This is just on the agenda. We'll read citizen comments in a second.
I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Any comments on the agenda? Back to council, Mark Beam, last word. All entertain a voice vote, all in favor of approving the agenda as it is? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any ayes? It's approved unanimously? Patty, I can't hear Jody Shirley. I assume that was an aye, correct?
Jody? Jody?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, unanimous, then.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, citizen comments. Mr. Shaw? Just like Mr. Shaw did, if anybody wants to speak, please come up to the podium, give your name and address. You have three minutes, and please adhere to our code of conduct, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Sorry for being out of order there. But I did notice that there was a recognition, small recognition ceremony here for our police officers, and it may well be that I didn't get the memo, and certainly the City Council has a right to do whatever they want to do in that area, but I'd just like to put out that in the future, if something like that is going to be done, something as important as recognizing our law enforcement, it might be not a bad idea, or it might be a good idea, to put something out to the citizens, so that some of us could have the opportunity to come here and say thank you to our law officers for all they do for us, day in and day out. So I just ask for that to maybe be considered in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Citizens, any other comments? Seeing no other hands, I'll close citizen comments at this time. An Ellis County Sheriff's Office, who are you present tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please come up. And Deputy, if you'll just give your name for the record, right up here.
Deputy Kelly, from the Ellis County Sheriff's Office. My supervisor's on the way. He's running late, hung up on a call, so I'm here in his place for the moment.
Deputy, I don't know, he might be kind of caught by surprise, because you, you know, weren't supposed to be speaking.
Yes, sir.
But do you have any information on the reports, the government November 2020 report? Do you have any information on that for us?
No, sir. He'll have that, and he's incoming, so he'll have that information for you shortly.
Okay. Counsel, would anybody have a problem if we just moved this to the point where Deputy Kelly comes in? Okay. You just, I'll be looking at it, and you'll just wave to me when he enters. I'll bring him back up as soon as we can, okay?
Thank you.
We have four items on the consent agenda. I'll read it by title, and just for anyone who's not familiar, the consent agenda, if approved, there's no discussion on this, so if someone on something off the consent agenda, speak now, or else it will get approved in total here. So item number four is approval of the December 7th, 2020 City Council Meeting Minutes. Item number five is approval of the December 7th, 2020 City Council Work Session Minutes. Item number six is approval of the December 21st, 2020 Special City Council Meeting Minutes. And item number seven is authorization to award a professional services contract for stormwater improvements on 12th and 13th Streets, the description being design and engineering in the amount of $32,500. Mr. Reeves, I just want to clarify, that change that you had, that does not, that's the next one down, it's not this one, right? It's the, it's the later stormwater issue? The one that you gave me?
No, that's item nine.
Nine, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to move four, five, six, and seven.
So moved.
Moved by Rita Swope, second. Second by Mark Beam. Discussion council? I'm sorry, this consent agenda, there's no discussion on this. So we're going to approve, the, the, the motion now before us is to approve the entire consent agenda. I'll read it again. Approval of the December 7th, 2020 City Council Meeting Minutes. Approval of the December 7th, 2020 City Council Work Session Minutes. Approval of the December 21st, 2020 Special City Council Meeting Minutes. And authorization to award a professional services contract for stormwater improvements on 12th and 13th Streets, the description being design and engineering in the amount of $32,500. A yes vote approves all items four, five, six, and seven. Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Councilmember Beam.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Aye. So passes seven to zero, the consent agenda is approved. We move to our regular agenda. Item number eight, consideration of ordinance 21-01, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Belle-Air Beach, Florida, providing for the amendment of Chapter 2, Boards, Committees, and Commissions of the City Code ordinances relating to the creation of an Administration Advisory Committee, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for the amendment of Chapter 2, Boards, Committees, and Commissions of the City Code of ordinances relating to the creation of an Administration Advisory Committee, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. The description is ordinance to develop a standing advisory committee for the continuity, for continuity and expectancy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Gunn.
Second.
Second. Second by Mark Beam. Vice Mayor.
I do have one suggestion, and I'll pitch that before I see if there's any consensus, before I ask for amendment, and that would be rather than call it an administrative committee, call it a citizens advisory committee. I think that just speaks to communications, not only to the residents, but from the residents, it gives them a formal engagement in the city of theirs. I don't know if there's any backing for that sort of thing. If there is, I'll go ahead and ask for the amendment.
It makes sense. I think that's what you've been talking about all along for the last, you know, two or three times of this interview, so yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue on it about anybody else, but.
I'm good with it. So, so I.
Gaddis is giving you a thumbs up. Autumn's giving you a thumbs up.
So at this time, I'll go ahead and ask for amendment to this, and instead that we call it the Citizens Advisory Committee in the City of Belle-Air Beach.
And do we have a second on that?
Second.
Seconds by Rita Swope. So now, discussion on just the change, the name change. Any discussion on that? No discussion. Citizens, just on the name change. Anybody have any comments on the name change only? Come back to you, Glenn Gunn, last word on that amendment, take the vote to make just the name change, and then we'll vote the whole thing.
I'm ready to call the question.
Okay. So, the amendment before us is to change the name from the Administration Advisory Committee, any place that appears in here, I'm not going to reread it all, I'll try and do it on the first pass, but that would be changed to Citizen Advisory Committee. A yes vote will approve that name change only. Madam Clerk, on the amendment only.
Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Beam.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Aye. So the amendment passes, it's now going to be called the Citizen Advisory Committee. We're back now to the discussion that we initially had, which is the formation of this committee, and the consideration of ordinance 21-01. Glenn Gunn, you started this, you kind of started with the amendment, so I'll come back to you if you have any thoughts to complete on before we move on.
I have nothing further. I think it's pretty much a little wrapping, but we'll talk on.
Anyone else? I, I do agree. I think this is a good committee. I think it will save us a lot of time. My only question is just in the administration of this committee, and it really comes down to how the, the city collects the information. It's a very important committee, and it asks for people to be very well-rounded. I think our present application that we use, it has nothing to do with this ordinance, but how it's held and enacted this ordinance, it doesn't really provide, it says attach a CV or resume if you want. I really think on this committee, we need to see what your background is. We're asking for people to be very well-rounded, have a great background, and I think it would be nice to know what people's background is, because sometimes we get kind of generic responses, I think, to some of the replies that we get. It would really be nice to know what people's business and their city background is. So, it doesn't change this, I think it just maybe puts a spot that it's kind of mandatory to give us your background, something more, you know, it's like a job application. That was just my only thought on it.
No, and I agree with that. It, it's a very important aspect of the city and its input, so maybe we put a little more specificity to the vetting process and have them appear in person, and say a few words, and give us an idea and answer questions.
I think that's excellent also, and I also wanted to personally thank you. I had my reservations about this, because that it was a three-year committee, and I see that that was changed to two years, it's corresponding to all our other committees, I'm totally behind this. Anyone else on council? I'll move to the citizens. There were no citizen comments. Back to you, Glenn Gunn, for the last word before I call it.
No, I would just speak to your fellow neighbors, and we've had some great inputs from the residents before, so if you're in attendance tonight and you have any interest, please step forward and let the city clerk or the city manager know. We certainly appreciate all the help and input we can get. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'm going to call the question. Item number eight, consideration, I'm going to try, Glenn, if I miss it, you just feel free to cut right in here, but I'm going to try and put the Citizen Advisory Committee in. So consideration of ordinance 21-01, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Belle-Air Beach, Florida, providing for the amendment of Chapter 2, Boards, Committees, and Commissions of the City Code ordinances relating to the creation of a Citizen Advisory Committee, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for the amendment of Chapter 2, Boards, Committees, and Commissions of the City Code ordinances related to the creation of a Citizens Advisory Committee, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. And I should point out that this is the first reading. We'll need a second reading of this if it passes tonight, so this is first reading, so everyone knows. To ordnance, to get a pass in ordinance, we need two readings, so this is the first one. Madam Clerk, a yes vote, a yes vote will bring this to that second vote and move it forward.
Councilmember Beam.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Aye. So it's unanimous, seven to zero, it passes, it'll be on our next agenda for the second reading. If it passes, then it becomes ordinance that is changed. Madam Clerk, could you please, for the next reading, make that change that we had with the, with the Citizen Advisory Committee? That's the only change that was approved.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item number nine is consideration of resolution. Okay, okay, it's resolution, 2021-01. A resolution of the City of Belle-Air Beach, Florida, amending and restating Resolution 2020-09 in its entirety, authorizing the issuance of a stormwater utility system revenue note Series 2021 in the principal amount of not to exceed $45,000 to fund the acquisition and installation of capital improvements necessary for the provision of stormwater management services in the city, providing that the Series 2021 note shall be a limited obligation of the city payable from certain stormwater fees as provided herein, providing for the rights and remedies of the owner of the Series 2021 note, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and providing for an effective date. Description on this is it authorizes the issuance of a stormwater utility revenue note not to exceed $45,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I had a tie there. Who was first? Rita Swope? Okay, and then Glenn Gunn. Move to read for discussion.
Yeah, I think we've discussed this pretty thoroughly before, so I'm ready to go ahead. I think they also have any discussion to move it forward.
On council? One question for the city attorney. You've read this through, you're satisfied with it from a legal perspective?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other council comments? Citizen comments? Back to council, ending with Rita Swope.
What do you have for the question?
This is item number nine, but one, one other point. This is, you're supposed to remind me, Lynn. Lynn told me that tonight, we got a blue line copy placed on our desks here. Section nine was amended by the instruction of the bank, correct?
Yes, and Chris Rose sent this amendment, so the, the one we will sign, it's page eight, basically, it's just changing some wording.
I'm going to read that, yes. So, so the change is, it says, "In settling the rate of the stormwater fee for each fiscal year, the city shall ensure that the net revenues to be collected shall be equal or to, or equal to or exceed 1.25 times the annual interest and principal payments coming due on the Series 2021 note in such fiscal year." Does that change anybody's ideas on this? Anybody want to say anything on council? Glenn Gunn?
I would just ask for the, for the benefit of the people who are in attendance tonight, if the city manager could just take 30 seconds and recap what this is for, just so that everybody in the audience understands what's with the. Mayor and council, this is for bond validation that we did earlier in the spring. We went to court to get validated, and this is one of the requirements of the bond. It's a three-year loan. The interest rate is 3.75%. And as we already stated, it won't exceed $45,000. We're going to utilize it for us to buy the check valves for the rest of the streets down, get a head start on, up to 18th Street, to get a head start on putting those check valves in before we get to the point where we work on their stormwater system. In the validation process, that's kind of like a pseudo, we bring pseudoggets ourselves to make a legal determination of how strong this stormwater policy is.
Right, right. Thank you. Lynn, I have one follow-up question to that. This puts an obligation to us that our net revenues to be collected shall be equal or exceed 1.25 times the interest rate. I, I know this personally, I don't think that's any issue, but I just want to hear it from you that that's not going to be an issue with the collection. I think we have way more.
It's not an issue. We're, we're, I think our estimated collections are like $170,000 here, so it's, that's.
I know it was well over 100. Okay, good. I'm going to go back to the citizens, in case there's any comments, because I just added that piece. Is there anything from the citizens? Back to council. Let's call this. So, item number nine is consideration of Resolution 2021-01, a resolution of the City of Belle-Air Beach, Florida, amending and restating Resolution 2020-09 in its entirety, authorizing the issuance of the Stormwater Utility System Revenue Note Series 2021 in the principle of not to exceed $45,000 to fund the acquisition and installation of capital improvements necessary for the provision of stormwater management services in the city, providing that the Series 2021 note shall be a limited obligation of the city payable from certain stormwater fees as provided herein, providing for the rights and remedies of the owner of the Series 2021 note, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and providing for an effective date. A yes vote passes this, there is no second reading. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Councilmember Beam.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Aye. It passes seven to zero, this is approved. City manager, you'll move forward with this then? Okay. I see the sheriff has arrived. You're ready to give that report? Okay, welcome. Come on up.
Happy New Year to everyone. Sorry for my tardiness, got a situation in our city, I had to go take care of it real quick first, but we had a good ending to the year. We had no other major calls in the month of December from what I could see, so next month's report should be about like our normal report. For November 2020, we had, we did have one larceny this month. I can see that we did have one arrest on a felonate for possession of a controlled substance, one for possession of drug paraphernalia and a DUI. That's only, but there's only two people total arrested for the month of November. For our regular monthly activity in this city, most of it was self-initiated, once again, mostly house checks, directed patrols. We did have, chose 93 traffic stops this past month, and there's only two crashes, and we had 124 citations and warnings issued in the month of November. So, hope everyone had a good New Year. Any questions, reference about their report?
Sheriff, I did, and I bet maybe it's just a typo or placed in the wrong line, but we have a felony in November 2020 that says forcible sex offense, and you didn't mention that, so I just wondered.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, I just, I just went back to page one, I was looking the wrong month on that. Yeah, I, I will get some information on that for you. Let me step in the back room. I did not see that in the report prior to now, so I will look that up for you, and I'll get your information on that as soon as I can.
That's out of character for our city, so if you could give us some information. If we don't, if you don't have it, you know, immediately, you can just get it to the city manager.
I, I will get that for you at the end, before the end of this meeting, okay?
That'll be wonderful. Just signal to me when you're ready, if you have any, if you want to speak again.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, well, thank you.
Any council comments or questions? Citizens, any questions for the sheriff? It's great to hear that December was a good month, so yeah, let's, let's just.
Yeah, I think, I think I saw very few offenses come in in December, so I think we're going to look good next month. So let me go look this up for you, and I'll let you know what I find.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, we're back to the regular agenda. We're now on item 10. This is the consideration of creating a City of Belle-Air Beach policy to specifically address remote attendance, as well as a quorum, physical presence, for the rapidly changing manner of conducting business electronically. The description says, "Develop a concept for remote attendance by City Council and the residents in alignment with the Florida's Government and the Sunshine Law and budgeting, acquisition, and implementation of the necessary equipment." So first, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Rita Swope makes the motion.
Second. I think that was Mark, or was it Dave? Fight it out. Mark.
I'll go to Rita Swope.
Uh, yeah. First, we'd like to ask who put this on the agenda?
That was, that was me.
Then I'll go ahead and defer to you, Vice Mayor Gunn.
Thank you. If you, if everyone will dig through their stack of enclosures in front of them, they'll find a full ledger with just some slides on it. I put together some notes and thoughts for everyone. I just want to make sure that Jody can hear me on the phone. Sometimes I know being on the other end there, it's kind of tougher.
Yeah, it's very difficult, but.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll do my best here. So I'm, I'm looking at the, the slides, there's two slides on each page. I'm sure, I'm not sure there's enough for the audience, or if there's any out there. But in essence, what I'm trying to do is just bring the city policy into alignment with what we've been basically doing, doing during all the emergencies, and as I started doing some research on this thing, what I find is a lot of other municipalities have been, had standing policies in effect since the, the 2010, 2014 timeframe. So what we've been doing isn't, isn't far from what the norm is on this thing, but along with everything else that I've always been preaching is, I would like to institutionalize this policy. I would like to have it in writing, so that everybody can refer to it and know exactly what the foundation is and the principles from which we operate, so. Let me just run through this very quickly. The goal of this whole thing is basically to develop a concise, common sense written policy that outlines attendance, including electronic at public meetings for the elected officials, as well as the residents. If you go through the second page there, the third slide, the policy should, and what I've done is encapsulate.
Excuse me, let me just interpret for a second. Point of information, I don't have that document. Do you have an extra? Thank you. Continue.
Okay, so to just encapsulate some of the things we're trying to capture, this, we all lead very busy, complex lifestyles, and this really dovetails very nicely with just, just the way we work and live today, as well as how we conduct business. So in essence, this policy should, number one, enable the effective and efficient conduct of city business. We definitely need to align with the scope and intent of all the Florida statutes, the Belle-Air Beach Charter and Code requirements, and of course, our strategic plan. We, we hope to foster participation by elected officials and residents. And when I say residents, it's not only to attend these meetings, but prior to this, we have been a little tight on attendance requirements, so that precluded busy, working people who had busy, traveling schedule from participating in municipal government, and hopefully this will maybe bring some of those people into the fold. The policy needs to engender a sense of community, promote two-way communication, discussion, feedback, and the positive exchange of ideas, and of course, as we found out during this whole COVID thing, augment safety and the flexibility in case of emergencies. So far as the background goes, we need to go out, I've done a cursory benchmarking of some other municipalities, and I've actually enclosed a resolution there from Illinois, and it dates back to 2014, so this is nothing new. People have been doing this for a long time, and as I address some of the things we need to include in this, and you'll, you can see right in that resolution that it hits on most of the topics, and we could probably use a lot of the other municipalities as a boilerplate for what we want to do, and really kind of speed up this process. In the previous background information that was sent out, there was a white paper by this Robert Eschenfelder, and again, it goes back to 2010, and he discusses the modern sunshine laws in Florida, and how attending a meet, public meetings electronically is basically consistent with all the sunshine requirements imposed by the Florida statute. In the white paper, he did talk about a quorum, and his recommendation is to leave it unless we find that the Florida statutes have changed since 2010, but to go ahead and leave those as an in-person requirement, so that, in other words, a meeting is not considered a meeting and not able to transact business that's binding on the city unless you have a quorum in person at the meeting place. The sunshine requirements, just a quick overview, meeting held at an accessible public place where public officials may hear each other and all other speakers, and in clause of judicial matters, public officials and the parties can see exhibits and other evidence. Obviously, these are all things we're going to strive for if we meet electronically. We would like to be able to not only see and hear all the other elected officials, but the residents need to be able to see and hear us, and if they want to speak and engage the City Council, then they need to be able to do that, and we also need a format so that we can present documents and that sort of thing for everyone to view. So far as the next steps go, draft, review, edit, and enact a written policy that addresses the use of electronic technology for these purposes. I, I took an educated guess, three months, and I think that's just the, the most exorbitant timeframe.[1717.26] timeframe. I, I think if we can find a good benchmark and use their boilerplate, we can speed up this process very quickly. We want to be able to cover such things as attendance, quorum, voting procedures, and resident participation. And lastly, outfit the council chambers with the appropriate technology to allow interaction, in-person attendance as well as the remote electronic attendance. City manager and his staff has already started that. He's got a big screen ready to go over the back, but I think we need to just kind of sit down and conceptualize how best to do this. We want to be able to see each other, even if we're sitting up here, if we're sitting at home. Citizens should be able to see us and speak. Then we need to figure out how we're going to work the process. Who's going to actually staff this thing and control the inputs from the citizens and that sort of thing. I broke it down, conceptualizing, determining the procedures, budgeting, doing the initial acquisition, and staffing and training the personnel. I come up with an outside figure of 10 months. I think we can easily shave that down. So we're probably talking anywhere from nine months to a year, a little more than that. And that sort of approach could obviously be phased in. I mean, tonight we've got Ms. Shirley calling in, our dialing, and so I mean, we can start ramping this thing up and just understand how, how, where we are now and where we want to go and how we're going to get there. That pretty much covers all of that. There is one baseline thing left, and that's in the actual section 2-59 of our charter that talks about the essence of a quorum. The first section addresses the makeup and the purpose of a quorum, and then the last portion of it talks about, and I can read that verbatim, "In the absence of a quorum, the mayor shall at the insistence of other council members present, compel the attendance of the absent council members, which shall delay a meeting for no longer than 30 minutes." Now, to me, that's kind of a loose end to this thing. We've had numerous discussions with this thing, and there seems to be perhaps some disagreement in how that's to be interpreted or what that actually means. So I would like to take the time and a couple minutes of discussion here to figure out what everybody's thoughts are on that. As I read through that, it's a multi-part kind of requirement there. The, the first part is, it's at the insistence of other council members present. It's not a unilateral decision of any member present to decide what the action is that's going to be taken. The second part that is kind of nebulous to me is this word compel. I'm not quite sure what that means, and I think we need to perhaps open up the discussion to figure out what that's supposed to mean. And then the third part of, it is basically, it's not to be delayed for any longer than 30 minutes. So at this point, I can open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I'll take it back. So back to council comments. I'm, I'm gonna jump in here. I stick with the idea of the, of the remote meetings. I think other cities are doing it, other groups that I'm on, other boards are doing it. Couple ideas, some places, some of the boards I'm on will mandate a certain number of in-person meetings, and the rest can be virtual. Okay? We ran the city for six months on virtual meetings, and you know, it started off rocky because nobody knew what was coming, and we ramped up, and by the end, I think we were doing very well with it. So it does work. I don't think that there's anything that compels. Right now, I think the idea, and I looked through this with the charter and our ordinance is, I think the idea right now is that we be here in person, but I don't think that's a requirement that we're stuck with. We can change that. And based on that law article that you sent out, they said basically that, well, the Attorney General apparently is all over the place on their interpretation of it, but they said that, you know, basically a quorum doesn't necessarily have to be in person. It can be a meeting of members. So I think we can look at this because it doesn't have to necessarily be in person. It doesn't have to be in person every single time. The technology we have at least been scalping up right now, and we can probably expand that better. There was something in this article that I thought was very good. You know, a lot of us are technology, we, we like it. There's other people who don't own a computer or a smartphone. We have to, if we're going to do this, have an ability to have somebody here, and we can usually have somebody at headquarters, where you can come in, there is a computer available to you if you don't know it. So this gives the citizens the opportunity to come in. But I think we could even think outside the box and think to maybe making a certain number of these things virtual. We hit 10,000 cases a day of COVID right now. I hope to God it's cured in a few months, but I was just talking with city manager, he can't even get an appointment to get a shot right now. So it may not be cured as quickly as we hoped for. So we could think about this long-term, and there's no reason we can't change this. In terms of timeline, the only other comment I have is that the ordinance, I think we have to change ordinances, so you're looking at two readings on that. But we, the nucleus of this is a good idea, and I think we can flesh it out as a council to the detail on it. So as for 2-59, I'll tell you what Paul Marino told me, our former attorney. He said basically, if the city council is sitting home, you could compel their attendance, which isn't totally correct because it says somebody else has, they'd have to be brought by the people that are here, compel their attendance, and basically actually have them brought to the meetings. I think that's a very severe thing, but at the same token, business has to be done if you can't boycott meetings. So I, I would hope we never have to use something like that. I don't care if we take it out or not, but if you get a council that decides to stay home, and there are new rules, you have four absences before they're off council. So it could be months that this city is deadlocked. So that's my opinion on it.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take those in the order you presented them. Number one is, I, I think if you go back and you read that.
You know, I'm gonna, let's go back and, let's get hold of council comments, and then I'll come back to you on a second go-round. Actually, he goes back to read and then works its way back down. Anyone else?
Sure. Facing the problems that the country is going through right now, I think overall, we've done pretty well to adapt whenever we're all out of the building. We also seem to do very well whenever we're all in the building. The, the one problem we have is the mixed setting, where you have some people here, some people on the phone, and you're always going to have people that are at home that, that would prefer not to come in but are interested in, in our meetings. So in a nutshell, the piece that's missing really is, is something to support, some type of multimedia device here, which we've discussed a little in the past. It wasn't, it wasn't the correct solution for us, and I'm not really sure what is the correct solution. But as far as this understanding of the compelling council members to attend, I'm not sure if we've really had, if this has been a major issue for us.
It, it barely came up. It came up almost once, so hopefully it'll never come up again.
So, you know, I'm, I'm a little, I guess I'm trying to figure out where this actually came from, why, why this was included in this presentation. But beyond that, I am all for this moving into a solution for, for our future, because like you say, cases are ramping up. Even if they slow down, I don't think we're going back to what we used to know for any time soon. So I'm, I'm all for it.
All right. I agree with, with Dave. The thing we have to do is get the technology in place so that like the situation we have tonight with Councilwoman Shirley on the phone, it'd be nice to see her on video and back and forth, and again, with any call-ins, call-ins that we have, the same, the same way. I think it can be done with the staff, we put some money and budget for it, and it is very important.
Robin, or Jody?
Everybody said what I was thinking.
Patty, does Jody have any comments?
Patty, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Is it, can I can right now?
Yes.
Yes, the mayor recognized you. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so there is a perfect example of why we need to pursue this. Because I could, I think that Marv was, had mentioned me, and I heard about every other word. I did not even hear the mayor.
Okay, hold on. Jody? And they can't hear you either, so could you speak a little louder?
Oh gosh, I'm talking right into the phone. Um, yeah.
Okay, wait, here we go.
Is that better?
Well, that's good.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. That was all my fault.
Okay, so what I was saying was, I said that, you know, just to the point of the subconscious, I heard Marv speaking, but only heard very faintly, did not even hear mayor recognize me. So it's very difficult when you call in. I mean, and, and quite honestly, I'm sure that Glenn and Shirley knew why I'm out, but the reason I'm out is because I think I might have been exposed to COVID, and I didn't. It still has come back from the people who think they might have it. I didn't want to expose it anywhere else, so I decided it was best to stay home. Um, you know, this is, we all have lives outside of being council members, and so therefore I think it's kind of important to have some flexibility. Plus, I think it's really important to have resident participation, and I think you'll have more resident participation if we have some multimedia, um, communication available rather than this call-in, which is very, very, very difficult, you know? So Glenn, thank you for bringing this to the council. I appreciate it. That's it.
Jody, thank you, and I wish you the best. I hope and pray that everything will work out okay for you, and I'm sure we all do.
Thank you.
We're, we're gonna go around second round, and I think Glenn, I know you wanted to speak, so go ahead.
Well, I'd like to speak as well.
Okay, Rita Swob, go ahead.
Vice Mayor Glenn Young, I'd like to say this is a very good presentation. I do think it's very important to get revoked and accessibility to our citizens that can't make it in. I agree with the timeline and all of that and the purpose of it, and I do think we need to look at equipment, see what we do need to get. As far as the quorum thing, that did obviously come to a head in the last work session meeting. I don't think anybody should be able to compel any member to come back in because actually it would be a violation of the Sunshine Law, in my opinion, or the mayor to ask any remaining council members here if there isn't a quorum here, because you're not supposed to have any conversation. So as far as compel the attendance, I'd like to see that just taken totally out. That's just giving somebody extra authority to threaten, basically to have other people arrested. I mean, Vice Mayor Glenn Young, you were threatened to be arrested on December 7th, which is a very important day in our history for military. You are obviously served in the military, and thank you for that, but to arrest the vice mayor of this city on December 7th was absolutely difficult to even listen to that. So that's my opinion on this.
Vice Mayor, your name.
I'll take them in some of the order. I, I agree with the idea that in-person meetings are, are important, but I think we need to have that flexibility, and maybe when we construct this thing, we come up with some reasonable schedule, maybe once a quarter, once a semi-annual period, you have a requirement for a, a full council meeting in person. That's to be decided on this. I think if you go back and you look at the law article, and it's going to be up to the city attorney to probably research and find out what the latest attorney, attorney general opinion is on this so far, but the fellow who wrote that white paper suggested you leave quorum in person to avoid any conflict. At a future date, Florida decides to stay with a in-person quorum, because that would mean that if you had any meetings prior to that, it might invalidate any actions taken by the city where you did not have an in-person quorum. So that was merely his suggestion, if you go back and you look through that white paper. And I think if, if we can't find any changes, then that may be a good, good thing to think about, is just stay with an in-person quorum along that thing. This, this idea of compel, I, I agree with what Rita said, and maybe it slipped some memories, but there was a very strong-arm statement made at a previous council meeting where there was a, well, if, if, if you decide to leave the meeting, I am going to compel the sheriff to, to bring you back. Well, I'm not quite sure. First of all, as I, I said, the, the whole discussion about compelling is multi-part, and it's not a unilateral decision made by the mayor. It's made at the insistence of the remaining council members there. So it's not a unilateral decision that's made. Secondly, I would like to know what compel means. City attorney, I'll, I'll ask you.
Hang on, hang on. Make your point, will I, city, you could ask the question, but you're, you're speaking right now.
And I've, I've made my point. So I don't believe that that word compel means that you, you ask, not even ask, I think the, the frame of reference at that point on December 7th was, I am going to direct the sheriff to bring you back if you leave this meeting. And I do not believe that's to be a, a proper interpretation of compel. I mean, in my mind, compel means we can get, ask the city clerk or the city manager to call the council member to please return, and like part three of 2-59 suggests, if that can't be done within 30 minutes, that's the end of the meeting. So I would at this point ask the city manager, what's his interpretation of compel? And then I'm going to follow that up with the city attorney, and then we can even ask the supervisor, the sheriff's detail here, what that.
We'll go through the council first, and then they'll, they'll come back to their questions later. Please note those questions. I'm going to speak about what was said because it's information that's incorrect. I'm going to remind everyone of what exactly happened on December 7th, and you can go back and look at the tape, and I, I've got Robin next. We've had four people here, and we're having a work session discussion. Two individuals, one individual was speaking, a citizen. I called a point of order. I was interrupted by the vice mayor, that's against our rules, told me to let them speak or I will leave and you will not get a quorum. I wouldn't say anything, and then he said, what are you going to do? Arrest me? He stood up, held his hands out, and said, he said, what are you going to do? Arrest me? I said, go ahead and do it and watch what happens. I'm going by what our former city attorney told me, okay? And the information is there. Now, he sat down, and we concluded the meeting. But if people are going to act up and break quorum and disrupt this meeting, then we will do whatever is on the ordinance. Whether you like the ordinance or not, it's still our ordinance. If you don't like it, we remove the ordinance. There's a procedure for that, too. As for whether we, I, I thought we were going to talk about meeting remotely and not talk about existing ordinances, because that really isn't in here, but since we're getting way off topic. If we're going to talk about compelling attendance, I already explained, but I think the reason was, I didn't pass that rule. That was passed with a prior council many, many years ago, and it's so that you can't have people sitting home. We had two members of this council walk out that night prior to the meeting. We had one member walk out in the middle of the meeting. We can't do business if everybody's going to go home. As for in-person versus not in-person, the Florida Attorney General's opinions are all over the place, and I, Fred, I, I, we can, I, I think it's unfair to place this on you to be the Supreme Court and figure out what they're trying to say. I know they're advisory only, but there's plenty of organizations in Florida that are meeting without quorum, right? Without in-person quorum. And this article said that we aren't going to do it. It is not fair, particularly in the middle of a pandemic, that certain people have to come here, and other people can take days, weeks, months away from the city and just choose to sit home. I mean, hey, I like sitting home. I could sit there in my slippers and conduct these meetings. I don't have to get in a suit and tie. It's really nice. It kind of puts it a little bit more difficult for those who do come here. I do agree, we should have at least one meeting per quarter, maybe one meeting per half in front of the citizens, no matter what. But after that, there's no reason this stuff can't be done remotely, and if we have to get the Attorney General to weigh in on it, I mean, I think it's just a matter of us changing our ordinance. Anyway, that's what happened. If you want to change 2-59, there's an easy procedure for doing that. Take it away, and then if people want to sit home, then they'll sit home, and we just won't conduct the business. After four meetings that you miss, then you're off council. It's that simple. Back to, Robin, have your hand up.
No, I was just going to kind of, you kind of did a little bit to clarify. Dave said, you know, I'm not sure why this slide was on, and I was thinking in my head it was on because of that meeting, the drama, and I just wanted, I wanted to point out that it's, it's not even one-sided. It was definitely heated on both sides, and the only reason why it concluded was because I had to start yelling in the microphone and practically stand up and get in front of two boys, pretty much. It felt like misbehaving. So I think that the issue why this was put on was probably more of a personal thing than anything else. I, to me, compel can be whatever it needs to be. Would you please return back to this meeting? Or we really need a vote on this? We need a quorum? Hey, can you just go pick him up and bring him in real quick with sirens blazing so he gets here faster? I think, again, when I talked about the last man, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems like every word, you can interpret it, interpret it any which way in law. So I don't think this needs to come out, but what I do think, that it never needs to be done. It never needs to be used, and I think that comes back to what Fred was saying about reasonable people, reasonable conclusions, all act like adults, stop getting tempers involved, stop getting hurt feelings, and stop bringing drama from past meetings back. Again, that's what this slide is about. Past drama, whiner relive it, and quite frankly, with these meetings, I am so sick of the drama. This is a tiny city. Our issues aren't nearly as huge as other big cities. I do not understand why we can't all get along. That's all.
Other council members on the second pass. Third pass, council. Glenn Young?
I think we had a problem with equating attendance to participation, and that is not, that is not true. You can sit at home in your pajamas and participate in a council meeting. Okay, so that basically goes to the argument of, well, they're not here, they're not participating in the city government. And again, you, we have already enacted charter amendments to what happens when you're not participating in those council meetings. So that's, that's a loophole. I do believe that business should be conducted gentleman I do believe that business should be conducted gentlemanly, without threats, and that should be how we conduct business. And when you subtract that out of the equation, then things do get heated and tempers flare and passions override critical thinking and discussion. So again, once again, I want to make sure we all have a common baseline of what this compel is. I think, I think there's no reason we need to go through the machinations of change in that. I just think we need to understand what that means. And I don't believe that it's, I can twist your arm and compel you and bring you back here forcibly to a meeting. No, that's not the gentlemanly way we do business here, and that's not the collegial way this body should operate. So I just want to make sure that that's a common baseline, and I'll defer to the city manager and the city attorney to see if I'm interpreting that wrong or if I'm just completely off the track.
So I'm still with council, I'm going to go over to you. We've done three passes, so I'm going to go back to city council, to the city officials. Attendance versus participation, one point, and that's the only point I'm going to make. You can sit here, and other than voting, you're not compelled to do anything other than not disrupt a meeting. No one has to say a word. You may not like the topic. You just sit here. You can doodle, subject to public disclosure, but you can sit and draw a sketch. But as long as you sit here, okay? When you go home, and that was not a televised meeting, okay? Then you're not in attendance any longer, and then we no longer have a quorum. So I have no problem where a person is. Jody Shirley is on the telephone right now. She is completely participating in this meeting to the extent she wishes to. That's fine. She doesn't have to say a word as long as she votes. That's it. So that's attendance versus participation. I don't think it matters where you are. Really doesn't. And I second what Robin said. I get comments. Council, anything else? I'm going to go to the city attorney and city manager if we don't have any other council comments. It doesn't matter the order to me. City Attorney, City Manager?
Well, I have a whole list of things. The principal thing is state law, which is the sunshine law, and that has the requirement that the meetings be in public and the criteria that Vice Mayor Gunn delineated in his presentation. There are, of course, for a violation of that, there's a penalty. And the penalty is a personal penalty to the seven of you who are the elected officials if you don't comply with the state law. So to me, that's the starting point. The several people, Vice Mayor Gunn and Mayor Manzo, have said the same things that I have assessment I made reading the article. That was the first time I'd ever seen an article that had all of those up to that point listed. I had at one point or another read many of those attorney general opinions, and the reality is, they are indeed all over the place. And the, it's, you know, most folks I hope realize, an attorney general opinion is an opinion that doesn't have any binding authority to it. It's basically a, the current city, or excuse me, current attorney general's view of the law at that point in time. The ones that count are the case law, and the case law, I would suspect, is also all over the place. I want to point something out to me that's very significant about 2020. You had to adapt during the pandemic, and the reason that you were able to do the remote meetings is because primarily the governor issued a series of executive orders that gave flexibility to the cities and counties to have meetings so that we could get through the COVID period. As far as I'm concerned, when the executive orders expired, we returned back to the previous regulatory scheme or statutory scheme, which was having the meetings in person. So as much as you may want to revert to that period of time, I would say, absent executive orders or absent statutory changes, I don't know that you're going to be able to do that. I'm going to take a contrarian's view of all I've heard, and I want especially Vice Mayor Gunn to know this. I read all the material you provided, and I pondered it quite a bit over the last, you know, two weeks or so that I've had to ponder it. It's not the only thing I thought of, though. Thankfully, I had other things to think about as well. But the contrarian's opinion is, if you want the law, there to be a change, then my suggestion to you is that you advocate the legislature to make a clarification that the, basically is the argument that the law should catch up with the technology. And I think I said before to this council, there's always a lag between the technology and the law, or excuse me, the other way around. There's always a lag between the law and technology, and technology is always in a race to catch up. It never catches up because technology just moves too fast. But I don't know the last time that the sunshine law related to public meetings was revamped, but I would say it's been long enough ago that a lot of the technology capabilities were simply not taken into account. And the one good thing out of COVID, if there was ever any, was that, you know, people learned to work in a different manner, including this council and other cities and counties all over the state of Florida. But my suggestion to you is, I don't know that I'm that enthusiastic about creating a policy, although if that's what you want to do, I certainly will, you know, be up for the task. My hard suggestion to you is to lobby the legislature to change the law so that it's a statewide issue. This is not the only city that's grappling with this type of thing. And I think the beauty in getting the law changed is it takes you out of the potential for somebody asserting that you're violating the law. I'm very much oriented towards safe harbors. And the safe harbor that you have when all seven of you are here is, there's simply no issue, but that with seven of you present, there is a quorum and there's full debate and discussion of every issue. When you start to have one or more or three people be absent, I think you get, you know, further away from the safe harbor. And I personally would always encourage my clients to pursue the safe harbor, you know, and limit the number of times you're going to venture far from it. The last thing I will say is on the compel issue, that's what Vice Mayor Gunn recited, what's in the city's code. That's a provision that you can change if you want to because it's in the code. And I will make the observation, compel isn't defined, and the code provision does not delineate the manner of the compulsion. So when determined in legal evaluation, when you, the term is not defined, then the general principle that is applied is that you use the generally, general meaning that that word has. Compel could mean a number of things. I've heard compel means the sheriff goes and does something, the city manager makes a phone call, the city clerk makes a phone call. All of those could be a manner of compulsion. But I will tell you, and I don't mean to speak for the sheriff, I don't speak for the sheriff. They have their own legal counsel, they're constitutional officers. But there's always going to be, in my mind, a separation of powers issue between us, or in this case, the presiding officer directing the sheriff to do something. I think you will get pushback from the sheriffs on that because they have to be independent. If somebody's standing here that is completely unruly and completely disruptive and have disregarded every reasonable request for them to conduct themselves in a manner that befits the quorum of this type of a meeting, then I think there would come a point where the sheriff would say the person is being disrupted, and they would do something. But I think there's, you get into a potentially a difficult situation for them if you try to direct them to do certain things. That's my view, and at some point, I may have to talk to their council about that if it's an issue. I'll conclude my comments with, in a way, a question. And my question is, has this been such a problem up till now that you really need to do something, create a policy to address a problem? During the time that I've been here, you've never canceled a meeting due to a lack of a quorum. And you, I think, have always, Lynn can speak better to this than I, but the times where there've been people away on vacation or sick, you've had them, the council members, communicating with either Patty, Lynn, or both, and you've, you know, worked things out so that you didn't have a meeting where a lot of people came here and you simply couldn't go hold a meeting. So I'm asking the question, is it really that big of a problem that you need to do something different? And if it is, and it's a concern that is a concern for the future, I'm all for being aware and planning for the, you know, how to do things better in the future. And I think I applaud Mayor or Vice Mayor Dunn, that's absolutely an issue you should be constantly considering. But I, again, will end with, is this really that big of an issue?
City Manager, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, my thing with this Zoom or whatever you want to call it, I think we found out a lot of things over the past few months. And I had talked to our IT guy about what would I need to do because I think we gained a lot of public input when we were on those Zoom meetings. And I think that is an important facet that we need to go forward and move forward to do something in here that we can do that. The council's going to go to iPads here probably in the next few months because that's part of the budget process. And I think the opportunity, if there's a way for the public to see you visually, and they're at home and they want to call in and talk to the meeting because they don't, you know, they can't get here or for whatever reason, if there's something that's important. I think it's important that they have that opportunity. And I really thought that we got a lot of people, a lot more people than what we got here tonight, ten people, okay? Roughly. We had more than ten people on the Zoom calls. So what that tells me is, we need to move forward and try to create something. And how we do that is, I think, what the vice mayor is kind of proposing, is to figure out what's the best way to communicate to the citizens and what's the best way for the citizens to communicate to you. And, you know, if you're out of town, as an example, like in Jody's case tonight, we need to have that opportunity to make sure that she's heard, possibility she's visible if it's attainable. I think those are the things that going forward, the council needs to try to get in what I'll call the electronic age. And I'm not in the electronic age. Well, I guess I am sort of.
You still have a flip phone. You still have a flip phone.
Well, no, I have my personal phone. And I have a lot of, you know, I use the iPad regularly and things like that. I have a flip phone because that's what the city provides. But I think this is a step forward. And I don't know what, you know, I kind of heard that from the rest of the council that this is a positive step forward. And how we create the policy as far as the quorum and the issue, I read that article actually twice. The guy, there's differing opinions on many, many things in that article. They were all over the place. And so I think going forward, we need to look at this in some way. And the first policy may not be all-encompassing, but it's got to be started at this point, I think.
One second, Jody. Let me just get Lynn finished, and then I'll come right over to you.
As far as the compel, I have to go along with compelled as a word. I think that the comment that says at the insistence of the other council members present, I don't think any of us would want, and I would say from the statutory office of the sheriff, I don't think I could, I don't think any council member could, I don't think the mayor could, direct them to go get somebody from their house. I just don't think that. And I've had a couple of conversations with them, and that's pretty much where they're at with it. So the definition of compel, maybe we need to put something in the ordinance, what does compel mean? That could be what needs to be done, and it needs to be clear if this is going to be an issue. That's my opinion.
Jody Shirley?
Yeah, I just chimed in a little bit of what Lynn was saying. You know, this is the first time I've ever called in. It is extremely difficult to participate from this end. I don't see the electronic communication being a replacement for us like meetings. And, you know, maybe that's where, when we look into this further, we address that. In the case where, probably because people are still in business, still living life, you know, don't forget this is a non-compensating position. So, you know, it's not as though, in my view, it's volunteer, right? We're not, although we are elected officials, we are still a volunteer position in that we're giving our hours and our time to the city and to the residents of Banner Beach. And so there are the times, you know, meetings, right? Find the fact that we can't call in and participate surge. I just find it unbelievable that we haven't even gotten the technology to provide services for a council member, let alone in a residence who wants to participate. So I think it's really important. But again, I don't see this as a replacement for in-person meetings or have still the request for. And I feel it still needs to, that still needs to be priority. But this would be a situation in my climate or someone traveling or, you know, called away or, you know, what have you, they still have the ability to participate.
Thank you. City Attorney, after hearing your comments, I think I have to, our protection always comes when we're siding with what our city attorney tells us is an interpretation of the law. So if you're feeling that, you know, there really isn't the option at this point in time for the city council members to routinely participate, you know, in calling a quorum outside of the building, then to me, it's a nonstarter. That's to me. I don't know what everybody else feels, but I would not vote for something like that. However, you know, I think when it comes to the citizens, there's no such prohibition. So to the extent that we could, and I agree with Lynn, reads what he said, we counted ten people here tonight, such a decent attendance, everybody here is at risk. And I applaud everybody for coming out tonight, but, you know, you're putting yourself at risk of COVID to come to a council meeting. Wouldn't it be nice if you could be watching this on TV? Victor invited me one time to take a look at Indian Rocks. The technology is there. We did it in the middle of the summer. We did it in the middle of the summer. I was watching their meeting from my bedroom, okay? I'd never, I'd have to leave the bedroom. I was, I don't think I was able to participate. I think he got that later on, but you're able to do it if you want. So no reason citizens can't do it, even if we can't. I am concerned and I don't ascribe any nefarious motives or anything to this, but there is some concern about people who might be on council who might be not here for extended periods of time. Clearly, what Councilwoman Shirley is going through tonight is exactly what is envisioned by the Attorney General's opinions. There's a documented medical reason and thank God, you know, hopefully she'll be okay, but don't come in, okay? You know, that's a good situation. But, you know, if you're away for a week, a month, a year, that's a whole different story. And I think that is a possibility as I look at what might be coming down for this city down the road for some individuals, depending on what happens in the coming election. So it is something to think about. I don't know if people should be permitted to have extended absences. If everybody takes a vacation, Jody is right, it's a non-compensating position, go take your vacation. But if people are going to be gone for an extended period of time, then that's something that has to be discussed on the council as to what the visibility should be. I don't think we're going to resolve this tonight. This is a discussion thing, so we might want to bring this to a work session, but it's only seven o'clock, so I'll entertain as much discussion as people have relatively early in the night, so. Next. Sheriff, did you want to speak on this issue? You have the information, or do you have to leave?
Oh, I had something about it and I got to take care of it in the meantime. We're good.
Counsel, do you want me to just, he just wants to give us a piece of information. I think it's going to take a minute. Does anybody have an objection? Sheriff, come on up. We're going to break and go back to the sheriff's report.
I remember starting a report last month. I was able to find it. I can't give you a lot of details. It involves a juvenile. But the long and the short is that a juvenile was having some, was in some therapy, remember? It said that occurred back in July on supposedly on a beach and went to a house, maybe involving some drugs and alcohol, which ended up, you know, involving a sexual encounter eventually. And they were embarrassed about it and they didn't, and at the end of the day, they didn't want investigated, parents didn't want investigated, but, and so it wasn't taken any further. But we don't know exactly where it occurred either, but it was reported because the person lives in the city. They said it occurred on a beach and then a house, but we didn't ever find out where those locations were. So it was attributed to your stats. However, that doesn't mean that it occurred here anyway, it did occur. Okay?
Does anybody else have any questions on that? Citizens, council? Thank you for the follow-up on that. Really appreciate it. And it sets us all at ease and hopefully a personal get to help.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, back to our discussion. There's no one on the floor. Glenn, go.
To address the city attorney's comments, one, is this a real issue? Yes, it's a real issue. We hit our stride at the end of the executive orders by the governor allowing us to take this to Zoom meetings and sort of thing. We were really beginning to hit our stride on that. And now we are backsliding with this. We've got Jody calling in on a phone call who can barely be heard either way. So obviously, we're backsliding there. And regardless of how this goes, we need to get the technology in place to allow our residents to participate in this thing. And again, participate and attendance don't necessarily equate to one another, okay? The second thing is to advocate taking the legislative route. Well, this is a legislative route here and it's within our sphere of influence. And if you want to talk about lag, let's talk about the legislative process at the state level or at the federal level here. Why not legislate at, within our sphere of influence when we can get things moving within two to three monthly council meeting cycles rather than try to ramp up a entire state or Florida, maybe cities thing? You want to talk about glacial speed? You want to talk about lag? Well, by the time we get something moving at the state level on this sort of thing, we will long be gone. That's all I will say today.
Robin.
No, I was just going to say, going back to this overall issue, I'm in total support of updating our technology. So in the rare cases of like, you know, for example, like Jody tonight, or are residents able to participate if they're not able to come? But I'm not necessarily in favor of complete remote attendance as in, I don't feel like coming in tonight because whatever, so let me just do it and it'll still count. Or, you know, I mean, we all have vacations, but hopefully you don't have vacations more than four of the meetings, so it shouldn't be an issue if you miss one because of vacation I have. But you should be able to go to a second home or be a snowbird for six months and do your meetings from there because A, you're not in the city and B, if that's what you're signing up for, if that's the lifestyle you want to leave, more power to you, but maybe this isn't a position for you because you need to be involved. And going back to the glacial speed, I agree that government all over the country is very slow. But my interpretation of what Fred was saying is that you don't want to be the first city to do it. And something happened where it turns out to not be legal and then all our meetings don't count or our votes don't count in effect. So it's kind of more, to me, I interpret it as a safety in numbers. If 10 cities did it together, then you have more of a leg to stand on. But I agree with you, everything's slow and I don't think this is going to get resolved on the state level anytime soon, but I think we definitely need to update the technology. But as far as allowing remote attendance at the whim of a person because you just feel like it and don't feel like coming in, no. Special instances, yes, like, so I don't know how to reward that, but that's just my view.
Do you have a council comments before I open it up to the citizens?
I'd like to address that.
Let me see if anybody else is on the next round. Back to the next round, good.
Yeah, and a good point there. And I would recommend that you go through and look at the boilerplate resolution that it provided because there's actually guidance at the city level for determining what's an excusable attendance or non-attendance. So I agree with you. It shouldn't be at the whim of just, and I think people come to this job to do the best job possible. And I think most people feel here that there is a huge benefit to coming out and meeting the public and the residents. This is how business gets done, it gets done in person. So what I would suggest is that we go ahead and take a look at the boilerplate and try to come up with a workable solution to this thing. But I think it's something that needs to be done. I think we need to do the technology side of it and we need to have some allowances for people to excuse themselves from attendance and yet still participate, not be physically present, but participate in the governance of our community.
Council on the last round here. So now I'm going to open it up to the citizen comments. Victor.
I apologize. If I knew I was going to address the city council, I would have put on a tie. But while I'm not technically a city of your, a resident of your city, I'm hearing this discussion going back and forth and I'm, my mind is turning because you guys are reinventing the wheel. I have other towns that I work for that employ me to do these services for them. And one of them is City of Indian Rocks Beach. And basically what we have set up there, I spent a lot of time with City Manager Greg Memes over there, and we had the same discussions back and forth, what they wanted to do and have participation and have audience participation. And what we set up was a Zoom meeting. And basically I have my cameras that I connect to a computer that streams live to YouTube, to Facebook, to Zoom, all at the same time. So anybody can tune in and watch it. And then whatever's going on in the city council is like an active participant. So the viewers can see my camera focusing on whoever's talking, whether it's a resident that's attending. They also open it up for a limited audience. But that, to me, would be what you guys are looking for because it just connects everyone and people can come to the meeting or not come to the meeting. If a commissioner is exposed to COVID or feels not safe, then they can just connect to the meeting from their house and do it that way. But whoever's speaking at the actual meeting is captured on the cameras with the system that I have set up for them. So I just thought I'd share, even though I'm not a resident.
You're allowed to speak. No, thank you.
Perfect.
Any other citizens? Bring it back to council. And I will say, again, at Victor's invitation, I did in the summertime when we were exploring Zoom and the other stuff, I did sit in on one of those Indian Rocks thing. It worked fine. It worked real fine. So it was just like being there and I wasn't there. So that technology is here, he knows it. I'm not saying you have to use him, but he did a great job in Indian Rocks. Anyone else? I think at this point, I mean, I don't think we're going to go through this resolution and pick it apart tonight. It seems to me that there's interest, at least in consensus, if I hear everyone correct, I'm not speaking for anyone, but my understanding that I think we definitely want to look at the technology, definitely want to discuss this some more. And I think this definitely should get into one of our next work sessions and try and hammer this thing out so we can bring it back in and see, you know, what we do. Meantime, perhaps the city attorney, again, I'm not asking you to be the Supreme Court. I looked at that thing and, you know, there's 10 different opinions and 10 different reasons and one says you have to be sick and one says you have to be working. I mean, I don't know what we're doing with it. But we're going to, I'll tell you one thing. Whatever you tell me, as city attorney, is where the protection lies and that's where I'm going to go with it myself, so.
My response to that would be that the real key between now and when you next discuss this is for me to look and see if there's, what case law is there? And, I mean, you've looked it up in your job, I look up stuff. There are times you may find three cases and there's times there's 200. And I don't know which one this will fall into, but there, you know, there's typically, at some point if a statute's been around a while, there's a dispositive ruling somewhere along the line and that, that pretty well sets the benchmark. And until the legislature changes law again, that's, that gives you the criteria that you should be applying. So that, that would be the thing I will do and then, you know, come back and be ready to tell you this is what, the criteria that you really ought to be focused on.
Is it enough time for the, I don't think we even have a scheduled work session right yet, but I mean, typically about two weeks from now would be if we do one.
That'd be fine.
That'd be fine?
The other thing I was going to say is that the discussion kind of changed and my question is now, do you want to do a policy related to the establishing a quorum? Or do you want to do a policy that relates to putting in place technology so that citizens can participate from a remote place? And to me, those are two different kind of things.
I think it's all on the table. I think we brought it all out. So I don't think anything was excluded at this point, other than the idea of us probably meeting remotely unless, unless we can get something a little bit more firm in terms of case law. But I think everything, at least the way I heard it, everything was on the table. So I don't think we've excluded anything. And I mean, in terms of creating a citywide policy, you know, the readers who have brought this motion, but we can at any point call this question and move this thing forward. But I think where it's moving is not saying we're definitely creating the policy, but we're moving it into a detailed work session with a little bit more information from you and maybe a little bit more chance to review this resolution that Glenn Gunn gave us. Think about this some more so we understand exactly what we're looking for, how we're going to deal with this. Because I agree, I mean, stuff comes up, you know, people do have business arrangements and what are you supposed to do? You shouldn't have to forfeit an otherwise good career on council if you get called away for a couple of weeks, you know? So I, I think we should be as flexible as we could be within reason. Because reasonable, what did you say? Reasonable people doing reasonable things, something like that, so.
That was a famous quote.
I thought it was yours. Any other council comments? Reader's Hope, you have the last word.
Well, I would like to obviously see as we forward with this. So I'm just going to ask that we do put this on the work session and get some information as far as cost to update our equipment or that gentleman can provide us with a proposal when he, what he can do and what he can't do. And then at that point, we can look at getting a change made that is sufficient for our citizens as well as the quorum and all of that so we can take care of it all. That's all I have to say.
So if I get this correct, we're going to, the question was to consider, consideration of creating a City of Bellar Beach policy specifically to address remote attendance as well as a quorum, physical presence with a rapidly changing manner of conducting business electronically. So, and if anybody jumped in, if I'm saying this wrong, but a yes vote will get this into the committee, get Fred Riley working on this. Victor, if he wants to do a little presentation or some information to us, show us what you've done in Indian Rocks, I think that would be helpful. Everybody get a chance to review this resolution. So we're not killing this, we're just moving it to the, I guess, the next level. And I think that's what we were seeking initially, Mr. Gunn, right? Okay. So is that correct? I've stated it correctly? Okay, then Madam Clerk, please call the roll. A yes vote will bring it forward.
Councilmember Shirley?
Yes.
Councilmember Swote?
Yes.
Councilmember Aki?
Yes.
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye. So this will move forward to our next work session. Mr. Riley, as we discussed, please, good luck, whatever research you can come up with, any case law or what any other cities may have done would be helpful. Victor, you have the opportunity, just work right to the city manager, give him whatever presentation or come to that meeting and if you have the ability, show us what you've done or, you know, get everyone in on that, whatever you want to tell us. Okay, thank you. All right, so that concludes item number 10. Now, item number 11 is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
Just one thing I want to bring up is the sign. I gave you a packet a couple of weeks ago, gave you some quotes and I guess what I'm trying to do is find out from the council so we can go forward with this. The sign's been gone for 16, 90 days and I think it's time to do something. And I know there's mixed feelings about it. And I don't know if you brought your pictures with you tonight, but if you did, this was the scenario that we gave for the digital or electronic, just with words, not with flash and pictures, not Santa Claus or any of that. And this is the sign, which is kind of a mixture, which means not much wording that's going to go in this digital. And it's still, I guess how I look at it, it's still a sign like we had before. And I think just my recommendation is, the digital sign provides a better opportunity for things that happen like a hurricane or information we can get out, we can get it on there remotely. We're not talking about putting pictures up there or anything. We're talking about putting words up there. So this, the sign, if we even took the digital off and just did this, it's $30,000.
Say it again? We can hear that number.
If, if we took the digital off this and just made it similar to the sign we had before, the estimate that the guy gave us was $40,000. Of course, it's going to go out to bid. This sign is about $37,000. The duplicate sign is a mixture. And one is $45,000 because it's a mixture sign. So what I would like to do is get this thing out to bid. It's going to take some time. We've got $30,000 in the budget and we're probably going to receive $10,000 to $11,000 from the insurance. So I think we've got the money to do the project. It's just I need the council to.
Don't we have to give you this via resolution or some other type of formal instruction given the dollars?
Well, you'll have to approve the bid once it's out there. And you've already authorized me to go bid. I just want some consensus from the council. Where do you want to go with this? It's time. We've been back and forth on this for, I don't know, several months.
Counsel?
I'm ready to move forward. Let's take a consensus. Do I do an Indian style?
I don't have my picture. Link the hybrid one? Let's go through these prices again. Full digital is $45,000?
No, no, the digital sign, the estimate he provided us was $37,000. That's, that's the estimate he gave us. When we start mixing, that's when the prices go up because you're doing some of this and some of that. And he gave us prices of 45 and 47 for mixing that. Then he gave me a price for just what I'll call the old sign. Then he gave me a price for just what I'll call the old sign, where you had to go out and put the letters up and do things like that. And that was $3,000 more than the digital sign. It's less than a, you know, so, plus it's old technology.
Old technology is expensive.
You know, so...
This is a little brain, right? I mean, this is...
You know, I know that some of the concern by the council was the fact that we're gonna put something like Disney World up there, and that's not the intent. The intent is letters, not, you know, Santa Claus or, you know...
Beech and roads?
Huh?
Beech and roads?
Beech and roads, or whatever you want to call it. So I'm just asking the council to come and give me some direction. The Communications Committee recommended that we go to the digital sign, that they did recommend that. So I'm just asking you to give me some feedback so we can put this out on the street and see where the numbers come, actually.
I was in favor of keeping the old sign, you know, the old style sign, but if it's gonna cost us more to do digital, more work, that doesn't make sense. So I, I don't think it makes sense to do that, that's my opinion, so.
I'm actually in favor of the one where you can add the verbiage down here for emergencies like the hurricane and stuff, but this is the one that I would like to go ahead and look at. It was only, what, did you say about $2,000, $3,000 more than that one that you can do it?
That one's up in the mid-40s.
Okay.
It's several thousand more.
Several thousand.
What you're doing is you're mixing stuff.
Yeah.
You're still gonna pay the premium for the, what I want to call the electronic message portion, which is just this, and then you're gonna pay on top of that to put this up there also. And your space is limited also.
Okay, but for the, going back to the safety of our community, it'd be nice to have that capability in case, you know, it is evacuation plan or something like that. So for the safety of the community, I really think we ought to go ahead and spend the additional money and get the one that we can make an announcement when something is really important.
I just think you're gonna get the same message out with the other...
Okay.
Glenn, is the one you're holding the straight digital?
Yes.
Okay, right.
Can I ask a question about that? That one is still a full color sign.
Is that right?
Yes, you could change, you could make it pink or purple if you wanted to. So whenever something was important, you could change the color of the text.
Right.
And that sort of would, would give you the same effect.
Yeah, when there's an emergency like a hurricane, like we had, let's see, six weeks ago, you know, I could be sitting, I could evacuate and be putting a message up there telling, even though there's no residents here, well, the ones that stayed...
There's usually a few.
There's gonna be a few because they stayed last time, but at least we'd have the information out, you know, we can do it from over.
Well, that's a good idea, that since we can change the color of the letters, so I would like that.
Bobby?
I would say save the $11,000 and go with the digital one. I mean, that will solve everything with changing colors, make important things stand out, it's more...
Mayor Manzo?
Yes. Joe, you'll be next after Bobby. Bobby?
Say it's time to evolve with the times and go a little more digital.
Joe?
Councilmember Shirley, go ahead.
Okay, so it's hard to decipher because these aren't like labeled A and B or styled, you know, extra long by whatever, but when, I'm looking at the two you gave us, when the mixed medium one would be thicker for informational board, I think doesn't look nearly as nice as the one that's just strictly digital. And you know, I'm not saying that the digital sign, as long as we are only putting digital lettering in there that's not a constant feed of information, that's stationary, you know, we need to talk about that, what, how it's gonna be utilized, but because it is digital, the message can move, we can put pictures and images up, and it can look like Disney World, or it can be a stationary message. And I think that as long as we put some guidance in place of what that message is gonna look like, per launch to whoever happens to decide what they want to put up there today, that it's probably, that the sign would be only digital information is probably the best looking choice, and doesn't look nearly as busy as the one with the multimedia one. So that's my input.
Any other council comments? And I am gonna open this because we're gonna take a directional vote here, so I'm gonna open it up to the citizens if there's anything. We normally don't do this on unfinished business, but we are this time because we're voting. Citizens, any comments on this? Okay, then we'll come back to the council, if we're ready, we can vote them, I can vote them by price, straight digital, however we want to talk about it.
Well, no, just to clarify, this is what I'm gonna put out to bid, because this is from estimates from one vendor. We might get a better price.
Correct.
You know, so...
Well, we got any direction of which one we want you to put out to bid?
Yeah, so this is the one I'm recommending.
That's straight, I call that the straight digital one.
Yeah.
$37,000 on this, with this vendor.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Not, we'll just have Patty take it one at a time.
The only comment I have is it's a hard pill to swallow, and it's very expensive, but it has to be done, and I think that's probably the best case scenario.
I think we can just take it by person, just ask them what they want, let's make sure we're clear, and we'll tally the votes here.
Councilmember Aki?
Straight digital.
Councilmember Beam?
Digital.
Straight digital, right? Or mixed up and straight digital, that's two.
Councilmember Gaddis?
$37,000.
Straight digital, three.
Councilmember Shirley?
Straight digital, obviously.
Councilmember Swote?
Straight digital.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Straight digital.
Mayor Manzo?
Straight digital, so it's unanimous, Mr. Reeves, you know where you're heading now, so see what the best price you can get.
We'll put it, we'll put it out to bid, you've already authorized me to do that, so...
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
I had two items of unfinished business from the last meeting minutes, just a quick update, if you can give them to us. There's one of them, if you don't want to talk about it, don't say anything. The first one was the meeting with Matt McNally regarding the code revision change. I think he was the man who came in here, was asking us to actually change our code, and then we put an option for him to meet with yourself and Councilwoman Shirley, it was an option, it'll work if it ever happened, just follow that up.
Yes, we did meet with him and our engineer, and I had a discussion with Fred about the definition of habitable space, and I think we've rectified that. I will tell you that over the holidays, they came in with multiple other versions of questions about what our code says and what they would like to do, so this, he didn't really spill the beans, I guess is what I'm saying. He, he did a one hit, and now we're gonna do a five, six, and seven hit. So Larry and I have talked, and we're gonna send them something back because, you know, he came in, well, I want to raise the elevation of the lot, well, that's not gonna work, it's not fair to the people that live around you, or I'm gonna do something else. Can I put my steps in the setback? Another good example, that we haven't allowed anyone else to do it, and, you know, if he wants to submit a variance, that's, that's up to him, but that's just the generalization. It's kind of like, well, we'll start with this, and now we're gonna add some things.
Right, so nothing more for council to do right now, thank you for following up, and, you know, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Second one, which do not feel compelled to answer. We were, you and the Vice Mayor, we're gonna talk about supplemental law enforcement. And I don't want to go into too much detail here, just want to find out if we're moving along in that direction.
I, I've been out of town for a week, and the Vice Mayor is, of course, here, so we're gonna sit down and talk to that, and we did have some over the weekend, I haven't got the report back yet, we'll see how that went. We had a two days of four hour spotter and deputy, that cost us roughly $1,000 for that two day thing. So we'll just pick out some updates and figure out how we can work it out, where we can fit some of that money into, just by transferring some money out, maybe code enforcement, and then we'll give you a big number in the end and see if you want more. How's that?
I'd be interested in that report, that was a busy weekend, good call on the pick, that was definitely a weekend to do, seeing what was going on. There was a lot of, a lot of stuff going on that weekend, so.
Yeah, I, you know, it, because we have to do a contract each time, it's not a blanket contract, that's, that's how it works. So, but we've already done that, so we'll come back with something. I'll sit down with the Vice Mayor and we can have some more discussion. And if any of you have any input, when you think, you know, a specific date, send me an email, I don't have a problem with that. Okay?
Any other unfinished business from council? City Attorney?
None.
City Manager?
Okay, I just wanted to let you know, I've given you the financial and code reports, the bid for the video surveillance cameras in the building is going out on Wednesday. I've also put at your desk the code enforcement, or I mean the strategic plan update of what we had with the, for the staff, these were the objectives that the council gave us this year, and it's kind of an update of where we're going and what we're doing with those. Taking care of the sign. Occasionally we have someone come in and talk about the check valve's not working, so at the last storm, I decided to get a little salinity tester, the little thing you stick in the water, because everybody's telling me, oh no, the check valve's not working, it's, it's saltwater. So, you know, you stick this thing down in there and get the water test. Well, I did two samples. I did one out of the gutter on Ninth Street, because I hear a lot about the check valve's not working over there, and the gutter water came in, the salinity was at 270 parts per million. The salinity for the saltwater that's sitting right out here, that supposedly coming in the street also, was 4,291 parts per million, million. So it's just something that I kind of devise, so when we hear those things, we can go back and kind of test the water, and it's, you know, it's lame and stuff, but at least we can be able to explain that, hey, it's, it's not the check valve, it's just water that's in the street from, you know, the storm or something. So that's something we did, and the people that, they'll be out in the states, are probably gonna be very happy, because they're gonna get a Bellar Beach stimulus check. The people that paid will get some money back, depending on what they did, if they had undergrounding, they'll get about $2,300 back if their house was already undergrounded, if they prepaid upfront. If they had overhead and prepaid, they'll get about $1,800 back. What that does to the assessment, the people that had overhead to their house and, and the undergrounding, their $1,611 is gonna be reduced somewhere around $240. These are estimates right now, but they look pretty good. The person that just had the $1,267 assessment, which is that you already had your services to the house, they'll get back about $139. When I say $139, that means your $1,267 assessment's gonna go down $139. If you had the $1,611, it's gonna go down about $240, which we will take that excess money that's left, that's left over, we'll pay that down on the loan to get the assessment down. There's, I think it's 25 people that paid everything upfront, so they'll get a reimbursement check. So we'll firm these numbers up, we had a savings of about $380,000, so, over the project, so very fortunate. The last phase of it, I haven't got a definitive answer from Duke on when they're gonna finish that last phase, which is basically going down the road. Shouldn't interrupt anybody other than probably Mitch Crot's house and the house across the street for taking the final polls out. So that's just an update on that project. Started out at 2.2 million and it ended up about $1,830,000, so. And that was a lot of great support from the council members and the residents, and very helpful, so, you know, I want to thank, you know, I think that is very important, pass on to the residents in the neighborhood, they worked very well with the contractor, they, you know, if we had issues, they worked very well with that. We're getting ready to go, we've submitted for a bid for the undergrounding of Gulf Boulevard from Duke, and I don't know what the council's thought is, but I've got a thought that we maybe look, see if it's possible to put even solar lights in place, if we've got the money and the budget to do that, to eliminate that monthly cost. So, any questions? That's all I have.
I had one unrelated, but before we do that, you beat Washington, congratulations on the stimulus note going back to the people, so good job with that. Unfortunately, I got one of those mayor calls today, and the person asked that I bring it up at the council meeting. So I want to bring it up, and I didn't investigate it, I got this information this morning, so I'm just gonna exonerate it to the city manager, perhaps a visit will end the problem, but Patricia Hoffman?
You don't have to go any further.
You know all about it?
I am all about it.
Okay. I guess they've written two legal letters, can you just go out and, apparently these, these construction people across the street will not move, and they can't get out of their driveway. I guess her husband, Dr. Hoffman, is treating COVID patients at the emergency room, you know, he can't get out of his driveway. So I heard this, I'm like, you know what, let me get this over to Lynn, and apparently Danny Darty was very, very helpful, but maybe we can just get, explain to these guys across the street in the construction that they gotta keep the driveways area free for them.
Well, here, just to clarify this, there's a little problem there, because the guy's building it, just because this lot is across the street, where the driveway is there, if they bring a truck up to unload, we'll say lumber, to build the house, and they're on the other side of the street, that's still even that pass lane for them to get out of their driveway. I don't, I don't think at any time the driveway's been blocked, it's just that there's been a truck across the street. And the other morning, there, I got an email last week that said, "The workers are here before 7:00." Well, were they working? No. They were coming to work. There wasn't a hammer knocking or anything of that nature, so this is an ongoing situation, and unfortunately, on 15th Street, two vacant lots, two houses at the same time, next door to each other.
What happened to, I know I had to do this, and I think you even took pictures of mine because I did it so well, but you used to have to put in parking pads on your property so that you got the cars off the street, do we still have that?
Well, no, 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 what the biggest complaint has been is them delivering materials to their construction site, and it's, it's only that one person, no one else on the street has said anything. There is a person that's questioning some drainage on the back of one lot, which we'll get that resolved when the construction is done. But just like when your house was built, you probably drove a, unless you did it all in a pickup, you had a tractor trailer come up, and they unloaded the supplies, and took them off the truck and put them in your yard. Well, you probably took half the street or a third of the street, so the house across the street had to make a little better turn backing out of the driveway. Happened to me the other day on my street, where...
Hey Lynn?
Yes?
Can I ask that, please, actually being, the other morning, it was probably 7:00 AM, they had... They had two tractor trailers of block being delivered. There is nowhere for that pool except at the turn lane going, you know, they took us off boulevard. And then they have to offload the forklifts. And that is just part of the construction. I mean, there is no way around it. They were there, I appreciate that they were there early. It was cumbersome. I was a little aggravated, but it's part of construction, as part of
Yes.
when you have new construction on the beach. They handled it, the two guys, trucks and trucks handled it very professionally. They did their best with pickup and foot, but they still parked on Gulf Boulevard at the turn lane on the highway. And they did, they did their best job to get offloaded as quickly as possible and out of here. So I commend them for doing a good job.
Yeah, so, so, you know, Danny's been there many times. I've talked to, it's just an issue with, and you're really in the early stages of these houses. So we're going to hear about this for a long time.
They have my number, so I'm sure I'll hear about it. Look, I'm.
But I'll call her again.
Thank you. And Danny, they were very happy apparently with his visit, so maybe utilize that to the best of, you know, what you can. I, I'm not taking sides. I don't know what happened. I wasn't out there and I'm not going to go look at people unloading stuff. It is a, as Jody says, it's part of construction, but if you can't really get out your driveway, that's a different story. So we, we kind of all work together.
Every time that I've been there when it's been a situation, the truck has been on the edge of the property or partially in the street. So yes, that, that guy probably did have his forklift out, and he did. He had his forklift out. He went out the street, picked up the lumber and drove around the truck and went to the other side. Because he, he wants to be stable picking it off the truck. Any house that's built, unfortunately, it's a situation where there's two houses being built at the same, exact same time. Andy?
You're aware of it, so whatever you can. Glenn?
Interestingly, I, I went down and looked at that situation and more concern for me, and I've already discussed this with the city manager, is the damage being done to the streets, the pavements and the, the curb, the valley curbs there. And we talked about coming up with some idea. I mean, we live in a highly desirable area. People are going to buy lots, put up large homes, which means lots of concrete trucks, lots of blocks, things like that. And we need to start figuring this into perhaps, how do we pass that through to the owner or to the contractor or somebody? But we can't always be following around these new homes, repairing valley curve and things like that. So that, I just want to interject that that'll be coming up in some of these objectives.
Glenn, I think that's an excellent point. I mean, I know when I did mine, Lynn, you came out and visited and said you were going to repave the street. So up until that point, we were trying to be as careful as possible or a little less careful after that. But why can't we charge a, a deposit when we, when somebody is building a big house, a big, you know, something big? And just like, you know, a, a security deposit on a rental property, you get it back and Lynn goes out and takes pictures before the thing. And if you, like Glenn is saying, the valley curbs are all cracked and the street's all gouged up. Well, you know, there's going to be an assessment for that. You're not going to get your refund back. You keep it clean, you don't gouge it all up and destroy it. Because really, we can't keep replacing this stuff. Some of these streets are brand, you know, you're doing them brand new and then people come in and trash them up. So we don't want that. That's not progress.
Yeah, the Vice Mayor and I talked about that, doing something where we.
Like a returnable impact fee? Deposit?
Mayor Mandel?
Yes, Jody, okay. Uh, Jody?
Yeah, just real quickly on that subject. I had mentioned this early on when I was looking, but I think that we need to really take a look at our impact fee, one, or have the builder bond, some road improvements because there is a possibility of damage. But I certainly do believe that we should be charging a little more impact fees because the damage doing, they're doing roadways are incredible. I mean, and I'm probably one of those guilty parties. I look on Harrison Avenue and there's a weight limit on our bridge. And there's been a lot of houses built that required heavy concrete trucks and blocks to come over that bridge that probably exceeded the weight limit. But, you know, I think that it's a, this is a conversation or work session, but it would be impact fees and/or just getting a planner, hiring a professional planner to take a look at our city and talk about what are, how are we to handle new construction? What's the best way to handle it? But maybe we should add that to the work session next time.
Everyone's nodding yes, it looks like so. Yes, could we add that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Impact fees, deposits, what, you know, let's have a discussion of this.
And the last thing, you're, you're going to need to, the typically third Monday work session is a holiday.
Yes.
So we need to pick another, either Monday or another day that's compatible with the council.
Just keep it that same week, go Tuesday or Wednesday? I think that's one of the King's birthday, I believe, that's a holiday, yes.
It's up to you.
I'm, I'm available, so I'll confirm. Wednesday? Everybody day after the holiday.
If you want to do it that week, pick a day, Tuesday, Wednesday, what's, what's the best?
Tuesday would work. Tuesday?
What specific date?
Uh, I think it's the 16th.
I think so.
Be a Tuesday. Is that right?
It might be the 18th, I don't know.
16th.
That would be the 19th, and I'm not available that night. That would be the 19th, I'm not available that night.
Oh, no, not for years.
We tipped it to the third week.
What about the Wednesday, the 20th?
I'm fine with that.
What day?
Wednesday, the 20th.
What day, what, what did he say? Wednesday, the 20th? Wednesday, the 20th? Everyone good with that?
Jody, can you hear that?
Actually, I can hear what they're saying.
Wednesday, the 20th for the work session. Would that be good?
Yes, that's fine.
Wednesday, the 20th it is. When is, is there, I thought I saw something about candidate night, legal women voters. When is that?
Oh, that's.
That's Thursday, the next night.
Okay.
It's going to be virtual.
Okay, okay.
It's going to be virtual.
Okay, well, it's virtual, okay. Okay, so Wednesday, the 20th. And Patty, you'll advise us when the deadline is for any other items of the work session?
Yes.
City Manager, anything else?
Nope. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. City Clerk?
Nothing.
City Clerk, I have something for you and it's a good thing.
Okay.
Last month, we spoke about writing a letter to the city of Madeira Beach and they had provided us with some detailed letters that were written by Mayor Serrano. And Patty knew about it and I saw her in the parking lot. She said, "I sent them to you." And I, I said, "Oh, thank you." And I said, "Well, I don't know if I'll be able to edit them." She said, "I already did." I can't thank you enough. I was super, super heavy, busy that week. I don't think I would have gotten them out. Patty, just so everybody knows, edited those things right down. I didn't have to change one word. I virtually signed them, they went out. And I thank you very, very much. You made that happen and I never asked you to do it. You just did that on your own. So very great proactivity and very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
City Council comments? It's an odd month, so we start with this one.
Uh, yes, I just would like to make sure that I thank Councilmember Shirley. She's the one that put together that luncheon, not the city, for our sheriff's officers as well as the city staff. Great turnout. It was paid for and sponsored by many of the people that live in our community. So I would like to encourage her to make that a yearly event and continue to grow it. So I hope you consider that, Councilmember Shirley. Other than that, I thank also the city staff for all the work you done over the holidays making sure the month's sweet. That's all I have.
Thank you. Jody Shirley?
Alina, thank you so much. I, I appreciate you letting me back. And I was getting going with Red Sox folks and we didn't share the information. But I did talk about the fact that we were going to do that, I think, December 7th meeting, I believe it was. And it was a very, very short notice, but we got approval from the sheriff and I had a great support of a group of residents that were aware of it and reached out to me to help. And we raised quite a bit of money on short notice. We were able to provide lunch for 12 residents and give them each $30 of gift certificates for local businesses that, you know, provided coffee, lunch or what have you. So we went to Maggie Mae's, Bel Air Coffee and the Bel Air Market. And, and we had a great support from residents that Patty had, you know, kept a tally of the money that was donated. And we still have funds available. So if this is something that everyone wants to participate in, that we can do more of a widespread city participation, we probably look to do something again in the spring. I believe we have over $100 city in a reserve account for future opportunities. So something we can talk about later, but just let everyone know. And then also, yes, Lynn, thank you for sharing that we met with Matt McNally who built our homes. Sorry to hear that, you know, we still have some open issues with him. I thought we took care of that. But this regarding the meeting again on December, where they want to build a home against power. So hopefully we get to the bottom of that and get them started on a new project that will bring us some more revenue to the state. So thank you guys for participating and sorry I couldn't see this tonight.
Thank you, Jody. Hope you deal well. Dave Gaddis?
Basically, all I want to say is I'd like to encourage the council to, while we're discussing policies for virtual meetings during troubled times, that we move simultaneously to, to go ahead and do something, get some equipment in here. I don't want to wait, I don't want to kick it down the road until we've, we've come up with a perfect policy. This is something we should have already had. The Communication Committee recommended it. We were discussing it. COVID's been here for a long time now, a year. It's time to, to resolve this and, and give everyone the opportunity to, to dial in from their home if they want to. And that's about all I have.
Thank you, Dave. Mark Bean?
Lynn, this is kind of a question for you. We, we periodically talked about the stormwater easements throughout the city between homes. I just wonder if we have, if they've worked on collecting where they're at or at least what amount of map as far as Kyle?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't done anything with that. We've done, we've got all the piping and everything is on map, so we know where they're at. We haven't researched any easements because that, that's going to take some time to dig through because we don't have any, to my knowledge, we don't have any real file of the easements that may have been given. You know, as an example, I've got a house that wants to construct on, and it's Third Street. There's an easement going through their property. We don't even know what it's for. So we're doing research to find things like that.
Right. And the, the other one I know, we talked about the sewer lines from Clausway to Nineteenth Street.
Right.
Which way the sewer goes in that area? And I just wondered if we'd be able to find out just where it goes so we can find out what the easement is.
Well, just before Christmas, I had a meeting with Penelope's Utilities and they're going to provide me something, but it won't be, what I want to call the public director, because they don't want to share the utility locations. They, they basically say it's a security issue. But they, they're going to provide me with something if I need to look for something. So they're in the process.
And the other thing, Lynn, I know we discussed the pathways on the north and south side of the city and the
Well.
Problems with utilities and the pathways that need to be moved?
Well, the utilities, there, there is something in the form of statutes that say if it's a transportation project, you can request them to move them at no cost to you. I know that for a fact because I used it, I was previously. We need to do a little more discussion on the pathways because my thought is if, if we are going to pave them, then we need to do that with a stormwater project, so it's not a big chunk. Because the estimate we got was $165,000 to, to do that. And I think that in pieces. And I have had some feedback from some of the neighbors that don't want to pave. So, but we have to figure out where we want to go with that and how you want to handle it.
Okay, and then I have driven through the city a couple of times over the holidays and there's a lot of low hanging trees and some trees that are by the street curbs, the valley curbs.
Well, Danny, we, we had a list that he went around and sent. I believe it was like 30 properties where he left courtesy notices. And he is following up on the people that are supposed to trim the trees. We did that with trees, we did it with docks, we did it with seawalls. And, you know, we just, it's, it's going to be a process because we basically took pictures. Dave and Jody were kind enough to take us out. Dave took me out before the storm and Jody took Laura out after the storm. So we had multiple pictures and, and the code enforcement person is following up on that.
Yeah, some of my neighbors are very concerned about some of the docks that are rickety out there and there's really nothing that's going on since the storm went through.
Right. He's fought, he's given them a courtesy notice that there's damage or there is. Dave and I went out. There wasn't a major, I wouldn't say there was any major seawall damage. It was more crank caps, you know, across the top, it pieces falling off. But for the most part, the seawalls were in pretty good shape. So that, that's a good thing. And it appears that over the years, a lot of people have upgraded their seawalls. It's just the cap on some of them has some chunks out and they've got to get those repaired.
I know some of the information I gave you that we reviewed, they're recommending weed holes put in.
Right.
I know the older seawalls do not, so weed, they do not have a code for it anyway, but something to think about.
Okay, thank you very much. Habanaki?
I know we've talked about this before. I'm surprised Marv hadn't brought it up, but speed limit reduction. We talked about it on golf, possibly. What, what do we need to do to get that discussed more or?
I think you need to discuss it at a work session.
Okay.
And then whatever the proponents of the council, they lose at that point in time.
Okay. Patty, can we add that to the next work session, just to start that conversation? I just don't want to keep kicking it down. I'm talking about the golf, the Lord. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Glenn?
As an alternative, those people who have access to FaceTime, you may consider that as an alternative for calling in here. My experience has shown that the voice and sound quality is a lot better and there's plenty of iPad's floating around the city staff and you might be able to get a visual of who's speaking and that sort of thing. But that's, I just throw that out there as an alternative. The, the sound quality is much better on FaceTime if you could do that. Two, the city manager passed out the updated objectives. I implore everybody to take a look at that and sanity check the priorities there. The city manager, the Stuteley, started to see linkages in some of these things that may take it out of just the regular, normal sort priorities. So take a look and in your mind, if you can pick up connections between some of these things and, hey, you know, there may be efficiencies or economies to doing this earlier or later because, hey, just like the paving, the pathways may be more appropriate with a stormwater improvement, sort of things there. Interestingly, traffic congestion is number four on his list right now. And a hard question we may need to ask ourselves is the, whether or not we need to keep that island that's right there, Clausway and Gulf Boulevard? Because that seems to be a huge, major source. right there, Clausway and Gulf Boulevard, because that seems to be a huge, major source, but I digress there. Undergrounding, major kudos to Lynn Reeves and Marv Bean, they're the guys who really made those coming in under budget possible. I mean, some of that was lost in the translation, you know, a misinterpretation of a stimulus check to the BEI residents as well. Basically, these guys made that project come in under budget, we're still dealing with trying to get some of the other stuff done, but that's why money's coming back. That's really a segue into, I ride my bicycle around, and boy, this place could really be something if we started banging together some of these other streets. Hibiscus, all those roads back there on the north side, Harrison and Howard, all of those places could really be a showplace. And it's, it's a matter of just finding the trick we need to band these together and make it an economy of scale to get these things done. Well, you look at some of the work that's been done, it could be a huge improvement for the city. That's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I don't have any comments, so with that, I'm going to ask for adjournment. Paul Faver?
Hi.
Good night, everyone, thanks for coming out.